He already did that, yep.
Six.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call our Board of Selectmen meeting to order for July 29th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. And this is just another public hearing on a discussion of the Department of Public Works.
Sorry, Eric, do you want to start with the roll call since Don's remote?
Yeah, good, yep. So we'll do a roll call, vote, Eric here.
Kim here. Missy here.
Carl here.
Don here, and I should be in the room in about 15 minutes.
Okay. And before we get started, just one announcement. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Seeing nobody, we don't have anybody online. So we're just going to do a continuation of our public hearing. We met the end of June and had quite a few people in here, I think, and we got some good feedback from some folks. Since then, not a lot has changed. I started speaking, we have a resident in Kingston who is a Director of Public Works in another town, and I began speaking with him, and he's willing to get involved with the town to help, you know, work on a, in a working group or whatever we want to put together to kind of discuss some things. And some of the issues that he brought up were similar issues that were brought up before by other people. We've had a number of people, you know, the way that we discussed this before was a Director of Public Works would also serve as the Superintendent of the Highway Department, and then the Highway Department would just have, you know, a foreman or manager or something.
But that was just more budget constraint, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, right. And we haven't come to any conclusion for what we're going to be proposing moving forward. But one of the big, big things that we've heard from folks is that the Highway Department really needs a dedicated superintendent. And so that also comes back to when we looked at this originally, budgeting and having that DPW director also be the Highway Superintendent, and it was only going to be an additional, what did we say, $30,000? Is that right? Yeah, $30,000 that was included in the budget. So, and some people have given us feedback that it's going to cost more than that, you know? You know, if we add other positions, or if we go back and say, okay, we're going to need a Highway Superintendent, then the Director of DPW is in completely a new position, not replacing an existing position. So that's something that has to be considered. And, you know, the cost could go up again if there were other positions that were argued for and created. So could another admin person, if they're not sharing admins of the existing departments, other support positions could, could cost more. Obviously, that's not what we were looking to do. And then, you know, there are other concerns, you know, there's politics of, again, we weren't initially looking at eliminating the water or sewer commissions, just taking away the operational day-to-day control from them and pointing them to, under the TA. Obviously, that can also cause some, I don't want to say politics, but it is politics. I mean, it's, so you have the superintendents reporting to two different people, basically. So the superintendent, obviously, all of them, all three superintendents or two, whatever, would have commissioners, or at least with water and sewer, would have the commissioners that originally we were suggesting would be policies, rates, that sort of thing, but the day-to-day operations would be in the town. So then there's conflicting loyalties and whatnot, so it does cause some blurred lines. Through our meetings, we were also discussing, or the commissioners brought up themselves, the Water and Sewer Commissioners had brought up the possibility of merging the two commissions of Water and Sewer. So you'd have like two Waters, two Sewer, or something along those lines, you know, for something for them to review. And I don't know that, we weren't getting involved in that portion of it, but that was just something that they had brought up and said they might look at doing something along those lines. Or also just meeting in general to talk about other ways that some of the same goals could be met without creating a Department of Public Works. So all this to say, nothing has really necessarily changed since June. There's no new information, other than I did speak to the existing DPW director who lives in town. And he said he's willing to try to get some other towns who have DPWs meet with us to get, you know, more information. But really, we're still in the fact-finding portion of this, so we need to hear from people. So I know we don't have a lot of people here today, but if you guys have anything.
Eric, one of the things I think keeps coming up is what's the, the cost savings? Because I think right now, that's where a lot of us, where our minds are, thinking about the future, especially this upcoming budget season, and whether, I mean, is there a cost savings to doing something like that? And if so, where does it lie? And I think talking about that would help.
So I think, you know, agreed. And so there's some lack of efficiency when you have three different departments who were, and I'm just going to keep, go back to this, to roadwork. I mean, I know there's other things that are, that are going on amongst those three departments, but there's no sharing of procurement, there's no sharing of resources, there's different engineering, there's different vendors, so you lose some efficiencies, and there could be cost savings in combining some of that. So there is that. There's also, we've talked about before, some of the engineering studies, and Keith, correct me if I'm wrong in saying this, but we have some engineering work that goes out, and it could be some peer review or some other engineering studies where if we had an in-house engineer, they would be able to handle some of that, maybe not all of that, but some of that that would, would save some costs. We've nev, we've never been quantified that. To quantify that, we'd have to go back through the last three or four, probably, or five years' worth of our spending to take a look at how much was spent and identify each one of those that could have been handled internally to get the, to get accurate numbers. But again, that was not the original purpose of looking at a DPW, but it certainly could be a benefit. So am I wrong in?
Oh, I think you're right on the money.
Yeah, okay. Was there anything else that I missed?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think I emailed you the list of all the questions that I had sort of summarized from a town meeting as well as from prior public hearings. At some point, we should probably have maybe a Q and A document or something that we can share, that answers some of those questions, or provide multiple options.
Right.
So I mean, much like, much like MBTA zoning, it wasn't just, we're doing this one thing. It was, here are the options for the different things that we could do, and what does the community want to do? I mean, that's, I mean, I think part of the reason that was ultimately successful at town meeting was all the work that Valerie had done to provide the thinking behind it. So if we, and I know you've done a lot of it sort of behind the scenes with a working group, but, but really showing that to everyone, and then they can make the decision based on that information.
So with that, there's five of us here, and there's plenty of time for everyone to speak. Elaine, you want to go first?
Elaine Fiore, Sewer Commissioner. Just to address a couple of things you mentioned, Eric.
Oh, before you go on, I'm going to be typing. I'm just typing what you're saying, I'm not doing something else.
Not verbatim, he's working on his documents for helping explain it.
Right, okay.
The Sewer Commission is not involved in the day-to-day operations. That's left up to the superintendent for emergency purposes and everything else. He manages all of that. And as far as shared procurement and things like that, we, we do work, they do, the superintendents do work with each other. I mean, for example, vehicles, we use the towns from, what is it, whatever it is that does vehicles. Chris told Dave about a chemical contract, a chemical avenue. So now we're using them, Dave got in touch with them, and we're realizing some savings from that because of Chris. So there's things going on. Maybe part of all of this is, is education and communicating and letting everybody know that what is going on, is it perfect? Nothing's ever perfect. But I'm here talking about sewer, so I'm, I've got something written up, so I just, if I could get through it. Ran out of ink, so I'm using technology, which is, Carl smiles, and he can get along, take, knows what I'm going through. Anyway, the presentation distributed at town meeting didn't accurately represent the wastewater department. Under the effective leadership of Chief Operator Superintendent Dave Walsh and Assistant Superintendent Carl Injimy, the department is well-managed with a dedicated staff that plays a vital role in the success. The treatment plant operators operates under the license of the Chief Operator Superintendent. The town doesn't hold the license to operate the plant, so he's responsible. That position is responsible for everything. The superintendent and the Sewer Commission is, we haven't been informed of any communication issues or inefficiencies or sewer projects lacking input from streets, trees, and parks, as mentioned in the, the presentation. And I'm, I'm saying this publicly because once something's in writing, people tend to believe it's fact, and I just want to, you know, put another side to all of that. The wastewater department consistently engages the town administrator and other relevant departments as necessary. All sewer projects requiring input from the Highway Department included, included the Highway Superintendent as a member of the project team. A few years ago, a collaborative road project took place on Marion Drive involving the wastewater, water, and highway departments. This initiative included the installation of new sewer and water lines with wastewater and water handling the pipe installation, while the Highway Department focused on drainage and repaving issues to ensure that all work met the town's standards. It's important to note that the Highway and Water Departments cannot assist the wastewater department at the plant or pump stations without the necessary licenses. Highway and wastewater cannot assist the Water Department without the necessary licenses. To create a level playing field with shared staff, it would be necessary for employees to obtain cross-licensing. This process would involve union negotiations and probably incur additional costs. Nothing that probably hasn't been said before. At the last meeting, a concern was raised about the potential for staff to be reassigned from one department to another, which could leave certain departments understaffed. Keith mentioned that he thought the daily operations really wouldn't be affected, and it might be 1% of time. So I asked the question, does this come down to having bodies to plow streets during snowstorms? Wastewater already assists the Highway Department with plowing when staff can be available. But assigning wastewater staff to a specific plow route could be an issue if they are redirected and needed back at the plant. I'm getting there. During weather events, the plant requires all hands on deck to manage the wastewater treatment plant, 16 pump stations and extensive piping. In the event of a power outage, while backup generators are in place, staff must be present to ensure operations run smoothly, especially since over 150 homes with grinder pumps may require attention depending on the outages duration. Flooding can also impact pump stations requiring staff presence. So, it may have the impression, because you don't see wastewater, you don't see the staff, that they're not busy. They are. Comparisons have been made to the structure of the planning department, with the department head reporting to the town administrator. This isn't really an equitable comparison. In emergencies, the superintendent has the authority to make critical decisions without waiting for the sewer commissioners to have a meeting. Immediate action is required. The town planner doesn't confront these types of situations. The staff is on call around the clock to address issues at the plant, pump stations, or individual residents, depending on the urgency. The town planner isn't. The wastewater staff has a full schedule of mandatory daily tasks, including testing, lab analysis, reporting, et cetera. The town planner doesn't. It's critical to remember also that handling wastewater involves hazardous materials, making it a specialized field, not suited for everyone. We actually had an employee who at one point worked at the treatment plant, and I believe is now working for highway. It wasn't a good fit, and I understand that. If this moves forward to town meeting, it's just, in my opinion, it's essential to establish a clear operational framework before hiring any personnel, rather than bringing someone on board to figure it out after the fact. Without a well-defined structure, the associated costs and impacts on the town and relative departments remain uncertain. I believe discussions and MOUs between departments on coordinated efforts, shared equipment, staff, et cetera, may accomplish the same goal. For example, if there's a highway project, it's engineered or whatever, it's reviewed by highway, and highway manages it. If it's not up to the town standard, you know, we've given them the resources, the engineering, the funding, if it's part of our project, that can be resolved. And sharing of equipment, again, I'm speaking wastewater, not a lot of our equipment people want to use, because it can be cross-contamination. And I think I mentioned it somewhere, the Vector truck, beautiful truck sitting out there, we can't use it for our pump stations, we have to outsource the vendors, because it's wastewater. So just things like that. I think a sit-down with the superintendents, whoever else needs to be involved, just to see what's trying to be accomplished, what are the challenges? And I'm sure that intelligent people, everybody can come up to some solution with not necessarily costing the town more money, or a lot of money. And I'll publicly say it, it's not about me being a sewer commissioner, it has nothing to do with that, it has to do with the structure of the department, and how, yes, I've been involved for many years, I know how it operates, and I just want to see, I don't want to see obstacles put in front of people when they're not necessarily needed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Chris Bracker, I'm superintendent of the water department. I agree largely with what Elaine just stated, in, to attest to, you know, the Vector truck, it's a beautiful piece of equipment, and today, our department used that truck to mitigate a water repair emergency. It was fundamentally getting that job done in approximately three hours, without having to shut down a large area of streets, of water service, and make that repair. So that's an invaluable piece of equipment that we share, we use it often, and we work immensely, very well with the highway department. Every snowstorm, my entire crew was out there plowing. And we mitigate our own snow removal, our own treatment plants and wells, you know, after the storm is done. My guys will stay additional two or three hours to plow everything and shovel everything out the night of the storm, so it doesn't freeze up overnight. So I just want to say that, you know, Elaine, what she stated is right on. We can't cross-train and share employees. You know, a laborer, here and there, a dump truck, here and there, but they're not qualified to, you know, and when I have a staff shortage, I have to work through that. I can't go and grab a highway guy or a wastewater guy, they don't have the qualification, they don't have a state license, in order to be able to do what we need to be done, day-to-day operations. So I would agree with you, with a lot of your statements, Elaine, very well stated, thank you.
And I think we agree, for the most part, with anything that's a licensed thing, totally agree with what you guys both said.
Sure. So I just want to, you know, acknowledge that we do work very well. Today, right to the end of the day, I was out with Sean on Creston Street with his paving, and he had questions about water line gates, you know, what can we do, what can we make work, when you repair parts, how do we work? So, you know, there's a different regime now, with, after retirements, and we work very, very well together. And I think you need to give that time, to let that light shine down on the town, and make, see how that works very smoothly. And just the last thing in my closing that I want to say is that, at the last meeting, you had stated that you would sit down with wastewater superintendent, water superintendent, highway superintendent, to converse with us, to get our position, our understanding, and where we stand and our thoughts with the DPW, and that never happened. I never got one correspondence.
I told you, just reach out to us. I put that in your hands, it wasn't our hands, and then you also, go ahead.
I also want to add that the, what you had said was that you would have loved to have had them at those working groups?
Yeah.
But the water commissioners did not allow for that. They did not, they said they...
I can pull the emails, it wasn't, it was an invite for a water commissioner, for the superintendents. It was requested of a water commissioner.
I know, but they communicated with them, and they said no.
Well, and then, my understanding was that at the last meeting, that the Board of Selectmen would reach out, it would be a public forum, or a closed forum, to converse.
So, I'll take, I will take the lead, and I'll try to find a date that works for Chairman Kohn, and we'll be in contact.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be great to hear, you know, from the boots on the ground, they run the day-to-day operations.
Chris, there's no, I can assure you, that because of the timeliness of this, this isn't happening for several months potentially, if not until next May, right? So, was it, so this wasn't something that had to happen in a week or two. So I apologize if there was some misunderstanding about timelines. I don't think Eric would ever just not respond, or reach out to you or Dave, but I will talk to Eric, get a couple of dates that are convenient for him to get together. I'll reach out to you and you, Dave and Sean, and see what works for you guys, and we'll set up a meeting sometime, I would say, in August.
Yeah, and getting back, I'm trying to remember what we said in June, because there was also, we'd also talked about having staff be able to talk to us, and whether we wanted that to be in a public hearing?
And there were some concerns that they wouldn't want to speak in a public hearing.
Right, so like, just two of, like, two of us?
No, I recall that, you asked that, and I said, I said, prefer in a public forum, that way it's clear transparency for anybody to see at any given time, because if it's all going to be recorded, anybody can review that information, it's there for the record.
Yeah.
I don't need to have a closed-door, one-on-one conversation. I think for clear transparency, you know, whatever it is, so you don't have to worry about calling a meeting for a quorum, you know, wherever the representation is, but I think it'd be great to hear from the guys, as Elaine stated, you know, myself, Dave, Sean, you know, we're on the out there every day, we see the day-to-day operations of what goes on every day, what's expected, what's required, and, you know, the problems that arise unexpectedly, you know?
Totally.
Monday, you know, we had a well down for four hours with an electrical issue, you know, and that was, you know, pretty significant, you know, we have to stop, push everything else on hold, to get that well back up and running with the demand that's going on right now with the pumpage, so. But it'd just be great to have those conversations, you know, with clear transparency for the public to be able to see, you know, wherever it is, so that everybody can see and know what's going on. I think it's important for them to know.
Sure.
That's all, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris.
I think it might be worth noting that the reason this came before town meeting in the first place, was because we were hearing from the people of the town and the employees that we had a problem that we needed to solve. Maybe the DPW, maybe we're hearing from this group that a DPW is not the solution, but we've heard feedback that what's working, what's happening now is not working. So, if there are ways we can improve that, that's outside of DPW, okay, I'm interested in learning more about that. Elaine bringing up the MOUs, it's interesting, I hadn't, I don't think we talked about that before. So, it's worth pursuing, but I just want everyone to understand, this is not some idea that was hatched in this group. This was feedback from the public, from the employees, saying, we have a problem. So, that's why we're here.
Did anybody else want to speak?
My name is Marsha Meekins. I live at 141 Lake Street in Kingston, and I am a member of the finance committee, but I'm not here in any capacity related to the finance committee. I guess I have a couple, I thought I made these points before, but I'll just try to make them again. And, one of the questions is, how do we reach out to the board? I had a conversation with Chairman Kohn before tonight's hearing, but that was only because, it was kind of like a back-channel situation. So, I would love to be able to reach out to the individual members, so we wouldn't be violating an open-meeting law, but I don't know how to do that, and I don't know...
So our email addresses are on the town website? If you go to the Board of Selectmen page, every single one of our emails is on the website?
I know that, but I'm saying, I like phone, I like real, interactive...
You're not putting, I'm not putting my home phone on the website.
No phones, okay.
I mean, I called you.
I know you did, and I appreciate that.
So keeping in mind, this is, this is not a job for the board, right? So, these cellphones are not provided by the town, it's our own personal cellphone.
I understand that, but the, one of the comments was, reach out to us. And then, it was, well, how do we do that, you know? Should we do it in a public meeting? And I'm all for transparency. Sad that not more people are here, but maybe they can look at this online and see what the people who had time to come will say. But I want, I'm an advocate for more transparency, so please do everything in public. You said that employees of the town reached out to you in a public setting and said there were these problems? I'm just trying to figure out, or was that privately? How did the board come to understand, through the employees, that there were these problems that needed to be addressed, that gave birth to the concept of a public works department?
For me, I can tell you, my issue wasn't, it didn't come from the employees, it was seeing, seeing the issues real-time. And it was water department, it wasn't sewer department.
Okay.
It was water department last year.
Well, I'm, do you, I'm just going to say that...
Dude, we've talked, I don't want to bash you, I really don't. And we, and I said it at town meeting, I've said it publicly...
I'm not going to bash anyone, it's not directed at.
But I'm, I'm, I'm being pushed to be transparent, so this is what I'm saying. And Elaine said at town meeting, sewer, you know, sewer does this, sewer does that, and I said, I know, we're fine with sewer. But it's still an overarching... Again, my push for this was just so that we had a formal line, because we can say, it shouldn't be up to individuals, it should be up, there should be, again, in my opinion, and we haven't, we haven't reached the final decision before we go before town meeting again. We may decide that MOUs will work perfectly, we need to work through this over the next several months, and talk to other people who've done this, and it may be fraught with more problems, and create more problems, when we can handle the same issues differently. I really don't want to, I don't want to, I'm not trying to embarrass anybody or put anybody down, because I know everybody's doing the best they can with what they've got, with the resources they have, I totally understand that. And we can't expect everything to be perfect, but that's where, that's where it started with me, and I don't even remember, quite honestly, who brought this up.
We've received updates from our, from our town administrator on various projects throughout the last, you know, what, four and a half years? And various delays or coordination issues, I would say.
Communication.
One example that I can think of is, we ended up having to do, and I honestly don't recall off the top of my head which project it was, but they, there was roadwork happening, impacting school drop-off and pickup, and also impacting...
I don't mean to interrupt you...
The election day. So I'm just trying to be very specific.
Again, with respect...
Yep.
I was just trying to follow up on your comment that you heard from town employees, like...
This is a town employee telling us about delays.
Again, you heard from the town administrator. I got the impression that you were referring to highway employees, water department employees, sewer department employees, employees throughout the town, speaking directly to the board.
And they may be speaking directly to the board.
And I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
If someone came to me directly, there's no way I would say, in this forum, this person came to me with concern.
I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying, more...
And we do have...
Words matter, and, and lots of transparency on this issue will be really helpful. So, if the reason for the genesis of a public works department was feedback that the board was getting through the town administrator, I mean, that's...
Again, it's, I just said it, it was something I directly observed.
For him.
We had problems, for me, that I, because we were getting complaints. So we see the problems, it was, it was very obvious.
But why different people support it, I think varies.
So, I mean, just moving on, another question, is the DPW matter, the creation of a DPW, returning to the voters at the fall town meeting? Because that creates a much more compressed timeline.
I don't support it personally at fall town meeting at this time.
I think at this point, no. I mean, I think we have a lot going on, I think, I think this is going to take more ti... I personally think this is taking more time. We have not discussed or deliberated this, so I'm saying this for the first time in front of them, but I would say we should wait until spring.
And I think Carl and I expressed that at the last meeting as well.
I was on record at the last meeting, that I absolutely would not support it on the fall town meeting.
Me as well.
And, you know, I...
And I'm in agreement.
I support Carl, and any member of the board who wants to push it off, because I think there's much more work that needs to be done on this.
Agreed.
And I'm not sure the timing of it, I'm not saying I, I'm not open to the idea, but maybe the timing isn't right. Final point, to follow up on something that you made, a point you made, Eric. I know the last time I was here, I mentioned that on the South Shore, there are six towns that have public works department. You apparently have reached out to one of those. There are also five towns that don't have. Have you reached out, or has anybody reached out to the towns that don't have, and to see how they might manage their, their structures? I think that would be helpful to sorting through this process on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Because I'm sure our issues are not unique, so...
I don't think they are.
Right.
I don't, and, and, you know, our population is, you know, some of the towns have much larger populations, and their public works departments, for example, Hanover, it includes all of their school buildings, but they don't have any wastewater responsibilities.
Right.
So it's really hard to compare, you know, the responsibilities, but I think it's helpful to at least find out how those that operate without a public works department really manage these communication issues that seem to have frustrated the townspeople. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Marsha.
I think when we're thinking about comparisons too, I'd be interested in looking at the towns that are, were in our comparative study that we did recently. So, because then you're looking at similar structure, similar population, if we're looking at it for wages, we could also look at it for this as well. So, I wouldn't necessarily compare Brockton, right, to Kingston?
Right.
But you can look at other communities that we were looking at for other analysis.
I agree, and I think, at least now, we know at least a quorum of us aren't interested in doing this for the fall.
I think, I think Missy Shucker had to, I don't know about Don.
It doesn't matter what he thinks, the other four don't want to do it.
You don't get, you don't get to say your opinion.
I'm kidding, Don, obviously, we care what you think.
I mean, I don't have a problem moving it to spring, I just think it's, a lot of towns do it, it's a relatively cut-and-dry thing, so I don't know. You can only, you can only have so many meetings about the same thing over and over again, so. But I don't have a problem getting more information, I have no issues with any of that.
I mean, if we made tremendous headway over the next couple of months, then we could change our mind and do that, but I think there is a lot of information that we need to get. We do need to have conversations with other towns, and I know, you know, summer's hard because people are on vacations. So, okay, so, I'm going to close this, but we don't have to close it, because we never opened...
What I would be interested in hearing, maybe at our next public meeting, is, I haven't really heard a reason against it.
Against what?
Against the DPW.
Well, other than, I mean, they're, so far, I've heard feedback about concerns about... Well, other than, I mean, so far I've heard feedback about concerns about independence, like wanting to maintain independence between the departments. I think we can address that in some ways, we just need to think about that. And I think with Elaine's comment about operational structure and just very clear explanation of what, how it would all work. And it's a fair question, and I think if we had that better defined, it would be easier to explain.
And my concern is cost.
Cost.
That, that, you know, we originally were talking about a $30,000 difference. At that time, I said I absolutely believe that we'll need a Director of Streets, Trees and Parks almost immediately. It sounds like we're already saying that's a good possibility. When we talk about engineering cost savings, we need to remember that most engineering costs from the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board are handled, are taken care of by the applicants. When we talk about other cost savings, because we're able to maybe combine functions or do things more efficiently, the only real cost savings you ever get is when you reduce bodies. So that you can be more efficient, if you don't cut a body or two, then you're not saving any money.
All right, anything else? All right, do we need to vote to close this? No.
If you want to have more public hearings, you'd have to set up a continuation date, but I.
I think we can.
We did move to open it initially, didn't we?
No.
First meeting? No.
No.
Because it's not officially a public hearing, we're just doing it out of choice.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't think we're ready to schedule another one. Just something with the superintendents.
If we do schedule one, I want to make sure, let's make sure we email the commissioners and the Water and Highway and Sewer superintendents, just so that they're aware of when it is. As much as I'm sure they watch all of our meetings with bated breath.
All right.
Can I ask, would you include all the department heads in that meeting, or just those three? Oh, I just meant to make sure they know when it is. Oh, yeah, but like a sit-down meeting, would it just be the three? Oh, that one?
Well, I think, we talked, Keith, I, I, I don't know, get your input on that, but I, I wanted to make ourselves available to speak to anybody. Again, you know, the staff, if they want to speak to us not in a public meeting, then it would just be with two of us.
Sure.
So, if it comes to other department heads that have nothing to do with those three departments, I, I don't know. If they have something to say, you know, we.
Certainly make, certainly open up to them if they'd like to come and express themselves, if the Board's okay with that. We can certainly do that and include them as well.
Sure. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, so, that's it for this meeting. I am now going to open our regular Board of Selectmen meeting. For July 29th at 6:08 PM. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, with the chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. I haven't seen nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's Office. There are several boards and commissions with vacancies. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. If you're interested in serving, please contact the Selectmen's Office at 781-585-0501. And I would also just add, you know, we've tried to do this recruiting at many events. Anything that I've, anytime I've been at a gathering of residents, I've always tried to recruit people. I was recruited in 2006 to do, join the School Committee by two existing School Committee members. You know, and me immediately saying, "I am not qualified to do that."
I'm pretty sure I want somebody recruited you to sit on this seat, too.
Somebody may have recruited me to be on this one as well, right. But the big thing to understand is, nobody goes to school to become a School Committee member or a Finance Committee member, and, and you don't have to have a finance degree or background to serve on that committee. It certainly helps to have those people who are, who have that sort of background. But what it really takes is someone who's just willing, who wants to help the town that they live in, who wants to, to make things better for themselves, for their family, for their neighbors. And you learn as you go. You know, we probably need to do, maybe a better job of onboarding and giving people what they need. But I feel like the committees that I joined, people did give me that information and they helped. So, I would say, we, we have three, three openings still on Finance Committee. What were the other ones right off the bat?
Capital planning, I mean, there are so many.
There are.
But we often talk about capital planning and Finance Committee.
Right.
It's front of mind, but I think people need to remember, there's probably an opening in whatever it is you're interested in. So, think about what it is that you really like, or you excel at, or maybe you're retired or working part-time and you have extra time that you want to give to the town. Contact one of us or the town administrator and just say, "Hey, I'd really like to get involved in this." Do you have anything for that? Because we probably have a volunteer opportunity for everything that you could think of. So, anything you are interested in and you have the time for, please let us know.
And I would say, if you're not sure that you have the ability to be, say, let's say, on Finance Committee, if you, it, it takes some reasoning, you know, some common sense, ability to listen, to learn, and make reasoned decisions. You know, we don't need people with agendas, right?
But that happens too.
But it does happen. You know, I got involved with schools because I wanted more computers in the schools.
Are you curious?
Right.
Are you willing to ask questions?
Right.
Right, Carl?
No comment.
But anyways, enough, enough about that. But please reach out to any of us, our contact information is on the, the town website. Feel free to reach out to us and, and ask questions. And if we don't know the answers, we can get you to the right people who could help out. So, again, please check our website for additional events or notices, KingstonMA.gov. Did you have an answer?
Sure.
Okay.
I just wanted to, we had three women, speaking of joining boards, who were on the Council on Aging Advisory Board, and they spent some time for that board, and I just wanted to thank them for their service there. Joan Hutchinson, she was 15 years on the Council on Aging Advisory Board. Katie Starr was 10 years, and Mary Harriman was two years. So, I just wanted to say thank you publicly to them. And I know we've been sending letters from the Selectmen's Office out to thank everyone that does give some time to board, so. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Any other announcements from the Board? All right, moving on, open forum, is there anybody here? Yep, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Will Kirschman, 273 Main Street, Kingston, MA. I want to start off today with letting everyone know that it's the time of year again. Mark the calendars, National Hours coming on the August 12th, from 4:30 to 7:00 PM. So, if you, I know you guys have a couple of meetings that, that is happening on that day, but if you have time, please try attending. And it was 4:30 to 7:00 PM behind a Civil League Vision Middle School. My next topic for today is gonna be asking for a, asking for a possible timeline for the, like, when the official, and I want the update on the Main Street sidewalk project, because I, I, I was trying to get updates for the last couple of days and it's going nowhere. So, and then, then I was, and then on additional items for number two, discussion of appointing rather than electing a town clerk. I'm, is it, I, may I make a quick recommendation that the Selectmen makes free picks of who are, to you, who are good candidates? If it does pass, you, you guys pick three people, and then the community chooses who, who they would like to serve out of those three people. Because at this time, it sounds like that, that it would be like taking it off the election and from people, the town's choice. And then we want to, and now what we want to, what I feel and my mom feels, that is, if we pick, if you guys pick three people, then we can, the community can basically choose after that.
We can talk about that up there.
Yep, is that it?
And then, let me just check my notes. And yes, if possible, can anybody comment on the Main Street sidewalks tonight?
Keith could probably have an update during his.
Yeah, do you want to do that? We can do it there.
Okay.
So, the Main Street sidewalks, and I was gonna mention it a little later on in the meeting, the main, the cost to repave, repair and repave the sidewalks is approximately $100,000, much more than we expected. So, what Streets, Trees and Parks is going to do sometime in August is they're going to remove the asphalt in the areas where, where roots are growing up and causing some of the humps in the sidewalks. They're gonna remove the roots themselves and then repave the sidewalks. So, they're flat, they're, they're much flatter than they are now. So, they're not gonna get a full repaving this summer. They'll be improved this summer. We're gonna be applying for, excuse me, we're gonna be applying for a state grant that we wouldn't receive the money if we were successful. We wouldn't receive that money until, and, and be able to spend it until next spring. But we are gonna make improvements to the sidewalks along Main Street sometime this summer before school starts.
Okay, and also, as well as that, I know you just said really trees are growing through and roots are growing through. Can you take a look at Shirley Ave and Maple Ave sidewalks corners? Because those right, which is connecting right to Main Street, that area, really they intersect with Main Street, had the whole, from me walking that path a lot. I see that, that they are starting to deteriorate and there's like, and it's not even accessible, first of all. And, and then we have the deterioration of those sidewalks, like grumbling bad.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that, thank you.
Okay.
If it's on the corners, would be sort of part of that, right?
Yeah, whatever we can, if there's, if there are issues that are, if the conditions are such that they're dangerous, we'll, we'll try to get those addressed this spring.
And for me, looking on the, the upcoming fiscal year 2026 budget, I saw that, that you guys brought up the fire station a little bit, the addition in it. Is any updates on that?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Sir. Okay. All right, so that's it for open forum. It is now past 6:15, and we have an appointment for 6:15. Why am I not saying, oh, here we go. So, we have a, a dangerous dog hearing. So, we received notification from the police chief indicating another incident involving a dog at 44 Rabbit Road. We consulted with town council to not notify the dog owner of the hearing as required. A formal letter was hand-delivered to the dog owner, Jenna Goldstein, informing her of the hearing. A copy of that letter is included in our board materials, and also included are the letter delivered to the dog owner, complaint number 26-0013 from the ACO, an animal bite report dated 7/4/2025, and a summary of the nuisance, dangerous dog hearing, master general laws created by town council. We have Attorney Steven Chaplin representing the town in attendance. Also attending the board meeting is Chief Holmes, our Animal Control Officer, Joanne Bedrow, and Assistant Animal Control Officer, Sonia Buckner. And I don't think we have the dog owner.
I'm on, I'm on the Zoom meeting, I'm here.
Okay.
And my attorney is present, too, that's Mr. Cohen, who's on.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna hand this over to Attorney Chaplin. How are you? Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it, always nice to be here despite the circumstances. We've unfortunately done over these hearings over the last several years. So, the Board is, the Board is very familiar with the law at this point. For the benefit of any members of the public, or anybody might be watching my television, or it might be on Zoom, by statute.
Hello, hello!
Who's speaking?
Mr. Valerie.
Can we, we can't mute him, can we?
You can.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
Okay, so in Massachusetts, by statute, when a, when a town receives a complaint of a dog bite or a dog attack, it's the Select Board unless otherwise designated, it's charged with investigating what occurred. Essentially, we hold a quasi-judicial hearing here, and we've, we've done that several times over the last several years. And in fact, with respect to this dog, Bert, that's in question this evening, we, we've held a number of hearings. This, this will be the third hearing. I believe that, just summary and context, there've been five incidents concerning 44 Rabbit Road. This Board did issue a decision last summer dated July 31st, found that both Bert and the owner's other dog, both of them Hank, both of them Great Danes, were dangerous dogs, as that term is defined by General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 136A. And there were three conditions that were ordered as part of the order last summer. And we had some enforcement action that went through the courts and came back to the Board. And then earlier this year, as that enforcement action was, was, was being dismissed because there was compliance, we received another complaint this year. The Board had elected not to take further action on the complaint at that time, and here we are. We've received another complaint from, from the same family that we received the, the immediately previous complaint. And it described an incident occurring on July 4th. So, I'm, I'm not sure if the complainants are here this evening. They're not, they're not coming this evening. So, we, we do have our Animal Control Department, we have the police chief present. We also, we also have the owners present and represented by council. For the benefit of folks who may not be familiar with the procedure, because the statute says examination under oath, I swear people as if they're witnesses, as if we're in court. Then, in this particular case, there's really not a decision for the Board to make whether the dog is dangerous or not. That determination was made last year. So, we're, we're really facing the question of whether or not there are additional remedial actions or additional conditions that the Board is inclined to impose in light of the, in light of the changed circumstances. What I might suggest we do this evening, if, if the Board's okay with it, we do have the owner represented by council. I worked with Attorney Cohen before, capable counsel. I was given an opportunity to cross-examine any witnesses and see as though he's familiar with the file. He's had an opportunity to consult with his client, perhaps he wishes to make an, an opening statement, and that may, may narrow the, the scope of the proceedings this evening.
Sure.
Attorney Cohen, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, thank you, Attorney Chaplin. Good evening, Jeremy Cohen of Boston Dog Lawyers, representing Jenna Carroll and Bert. And I, both Jenna and I understand everything that has happened and the amount of times that this issue has come before the Board. It's completely unacceptable. I, I have worked with Jenna on this, and I think if she had done some, some basic fixes along the way, perhaps sealing off the doggy door, where the dog seems to have been getting out of, we might be in a different position, but that didn't happen. And I've checked with trainers in, in, in my team, and it's correctable. The dynamic in the household has to change so that Bert understands his role, and it's not to be a leader, it's to be a follower, and the human needs to be the decision-maker and the leader. And you start that in the house by telling the dog when and where it can go, and when and where it can go outside. And that hasn't happened. Certainly, there's other measures that have been put in place, a fence, I believe, that was approved by the ACO. So, at this time, there's, I, I believe the only option left in, in speaking to Jenna and looking at all the facts is that we try to find a new home for Bert. I think her commitment to, to getting an additional trainer on board to train her and her husband on really in-house management of the dog so that they can better manage the dogs when they're outside, will be addressed to Hank only and to the family. And she and I, obviously, it's the Board's decision, but she and I have been working with a couple of different facilities to try to find a new home for Bert if his life was spared. I think here we have quantity of incidents, but based on the reports, I don't know that we've had, that we've had the kind of injuries and damage and. we, that we've had the kind of injuries and damage and repeated attacks that warrant euthanasia. But it looks to me like the board is out of options in terms of trying to, to leave the dog in place with my client and she recognizes that. And obviously she'll abide by whatever the board suggests, but we're, we're working with some Great Dane rescues who I've worked with in the past to share all the information we have about Bert with them, which the town has sent to me to have the dog evaluated and to have your animal control officer be fully aware of anybody who we might be considering or who would consider taking Bert so that there's full knowledge to the animal control officer wherever that dog may go, if it's allowed to, and full disclosure of, of everything that Bert has been accused of and has done. Thank you.
Hi, I have some questions, does the board have any questions?
Please go ahead first and then.
So attorney Cohen, in terms of rehoming Bert, is there a, is there a concrete process or a concrete timeline that's in place at this point?
So I've, working with Great Dane Rescue of New England, G D R N E. And what they've told me is they, they've received the information, they've agreed to have a deeper conversation with myself and Jenna, but they, they are down fosters, meaning they just don't have enough fosters right now. But they understand this isn't just a dog being surrendered, it's a dog who is out of chances of staying at home. So we're having a conversation tomorrow to see about how to expedite that. And part of it would be that whoever gets the dog or Great Dane Rescue gets it, that there's a trainer involved immediately. At the same time, I've worked on a case out in New Hampshire with Great Danes. There's a woman at Saddleback Pet Resort who handles Great Danes and I know one of hers recently passed, so she's on the list of somebody else to consider. And she has, she understands the behavior of Great Danes, she's a trainer. So I, I don't think it will take long, Great Danes are not that difficult to place, especially with, with all the paperwork we have here about what has happened. But I think, I'm, I think by August 15th would be the latest that he goes somewhere. If we don't have a place by then, then, oh, we'll have a place by then. But then the dog would, would obviously can't, can't remain in place.
So attorney Cohen, would you agree to, in order that Bert be rehomed by the 15th? Otherwise he would have to be humanely euthanized?
Yeah, it, yes, the, yes. The only caveat is because we, because you have 10 days to appeal this decision and while the decision that would be made is, is not, well, yeah, we, yeah, we have to do it. We have to get this dog home within 15 days. There's, there's no other way to do it. So, yes, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you still, I've been taking a long time answering your questions. Yes, August 15th would be.
That's okay, and I guess my, my only other question, just to make the record complete, you and your client have had an opportunity to review the email that was sent to the police chief on July 5th. Then are the, are the facts of the July 4th incident acknowledged and admitted to?
Uh, this is, yeah, this is the incident.
That happened on the July 4th?
Yeah, with, with, with the husband who lives there. I've spoken with Jenna about it and it's essentially what occurred. I don't know about the scope of the injuries, it looks like he said.
Can I ask a clarifying question about the report?
Yes, is your microphone on?
It is.
Okay.
It says here in the report, I think from our animal control officer, that, that the neighbor was, or the victim was walking the dog down the dirt driveway. Was that actually the road? Okay, it wasn't actually, so I was concerned with the wording of that. I just want to make sure that the walking wasn't occurring on the dog owner's driveway. It wasn't clear, so I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that. And did we ever receive a report from the hospital? I know we were waiting on that.
We did not receive that.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the inquiry, attorney Chaplin. Jenna, I'm going to ask you, you've had a chance to, to review the facts of the 5th, the 4th in the email that came. Do you dispute that?
Um, I, I've not seen an email from July 5th.
It's, it's in the reports that have been forwarded and, well, what's your familiarity with the most recent incident in July?
Um, I mean, my, I was here, but my understanding is, you know, one of the kids that were here let the dog out the front door and the neighbors were walking their dog by kind of within the minute or two that, that Bert was outside. And Bert kind of ran up to the driveway and, and went to see their dog and may have knocked Mrs. Stanglini over. I'm not, I'm not sure, I didn't witness it or anything, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those facts sound familiar to what's in the, in the report.
Okay, thank you, attorney Cohen, we appreciate the clarification. So I think the question is to the board, there's a proposal, a proposed resolution from the, on the owner's behalf through counsel. Is that, is that a proposal that is, that is something the board would be inclined to order or that is acceptable to the board under the circumstances?
So before you answer, before we answer that, does anybody want to hear from the chief or the animal control officer? Or did we feel like we have enough information based on all the documents that we've had? Yeah, and I mean, was there anything that you guys wanted to say or are you guys okay? Yeah, I feel like we have, I feel like we're pros at this, at this point, unfortunately.
I wasn't sure Carl scooted for it, so.
Do you have a question, Carl?
No, I've read all the documents and I think that that's as much detail as I need.
Okay, so the question before us is, the, the proposal would be that we could order euthanasia unless the dog is rehomed by August 15th. So that's a two week, little over two weeks, two and a half week time period, go ahead.
My only question to that is, and I'm, I, I fully agree that we need a hard window on this. Is that a window, and this is probably a question for attorney Cohen, is, is that a window that's too narrow? Like is, it didn't, it didn't sound, it, it sounds like they're, you know, it sounds like they're willing to give the dog up. Is, is, is 15 days too narrow? Whereas would it, would the, would it expand the possibilities a ton if it was, you know, three weeks? Or, you know, you know, you know what I mean? Like I don't think there's a difference between two weeks or three weeks or.
So the concern, of course, would be the longer the dog remains in place, more likely they are to potentially have another.
It's not potential, it's going to happen.
True.
So clearly the dogs are out and about and not being restrained.
Yeah, no, I, no, I get it.
So it, the problem is that the more time we give it, the more likely it is. You know, normally I'd say no, but in this case it's clearly proven that it's just going to happen again. So are we opening up too big of a window?
No, no, I get it.
So any other questions from the board?
I guess that question to me has been withdrawn.
I'm comfortable with the recommendation and also with the August 15th date.
Okay.
Sorry, I am as well. Hold on a second, what did attorney Cohen, did you say something?
Well, he had, and I, I can't see his name from here, but the board member had asked, asked me the question, but then I didn't answer it, I didn't want him to think I'm just not answering his question, but it sounds like it was answered by the board, if, if that's too narrow a window or not.
Oh.
Oh.
I mean, the only thing I would say is if, if we, that if it's August 13th and we have it all in place and they can't pick up the dog till August 16th or something, I would reach out to your attorney, say, hey, we might need 24 hours. But we have to have something in place, a plan by, by August 15th.
And those type of things are possible regardless of what we say, or is that not possible because of what we set in stone?
I would say as a, as a practical matter, you're going to make an order. If it's complied with on August 16th instead of August 15th, my guess is I'm not going to be brought back here to have a conversation about enforcement because something was a day late. We know that if we, we brought something like that to court, the court would look at me and say, did your fire car expire?
No, and that was actually kind of more of my point is kind of like if things are in place. But I know sometimes, you know, people have to travel, you know, four states away to come pick up a dog and it might take them longer than whatever, but.
So a more accurate answer is it's, it's, the board will make the order. If there's an enforcement issue, that's also for the board to consider. So it would be, you know, if there's a lag of a few days or even a week, it's quite unlikely that I'm going to be back here on an enforcement matter. Just will remind the public and reminds everybody that failure to abide by an order under Section 157 is a crime. And in this jurisdiction, the court insists upon it being handled criminally. So, but I, I don't want, I don't want members of the general public to think that we're not taking this seriously. We certainly are.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
Want to recommend some wording?
I was going to say, I think it's our third.
Yeah.
Do you want me to make a stab at this?
I can, I can help out.
All right, why don't you do it and we'll say so moved.
We'll do a, we'll do a couple, we'll do a couple of motions. So the first motion will be that the board reaffirms prior determinations that Bert is a dangerous dog as the term is defined in General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 136A.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, ari, aye?
Aye.
Against, all right, that's unanimous.
The second motion will be based upon the facts and circumstances of this present, present incident in conjunction with the prior incidents, that the following conditions be imposed upon Bert. That Bert be relocated, honored before, rehomed, I should say, honored before August 15th, 2025. And if not, Bert shall be humanely euthanized.
Second.
And we got a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, attorney Cohen.
Thank you all, appreciate it, have a good evening.
All right, now we're going to go back in time to our first item, which is low-income community shared solar program for Kingston. So we have Mark Capadona here. Welcome, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mark Capadona, Colonial Power at Five Mount Royal Ave, Marlboro, Mass. We currently are the town's consultant for the municipal aggregation program. I'm before you tonight to bring an enhancement to that program, should, should the board agree. So currently Colonial Power Group has been working with the D O E R for the last four plus years on a low-income community solar program. What does that mean? That means that a solar developer would have some, some solar somewhere and we would, we would have the town be the off-taker and deliver those benefits to the low-income customers here in Kingston. What does it mean to the town? From the town's standpoint, there's no cost, there's no risk, there's no add to staff. It's just an enhancement to the current municipal aggregation program. So what is the benefit for the low-income customer? Right now, the new rate that we're looking at would be 14.4. We have it kind of targeted so that the customer would be paying just two cents less, less at 12.4. Does it require the customer to do anything? It does not, we know who the customers are. We're going to work with the supplier to effectuate that, that lower rate on their bill so that they don't need to do anything. To participate, as long as they're in the program, they're going to get the benefit. This benefit piggybacks a, a low-income customer benefit that the utility gives everyone that qualifies for low income. Does it require anyone to qualify? It does require them to qualify with Eversource, your utility company, but it doesn't require anyone to come to the town or do any of those things. So as long as they're qualified, they're going to get this additional benefit. So a low-income customer would, would not pay the 14, they'd pay the 12.4. And then on top of that afterwards, they get 42% off their total bill. That's literally what the program is. It's, unfortunately, at this point, it's a little bit prescriptive, you know, how it all works because the Department of Public Utilities has said you have to give so much of the benefit to the low-income customer. Fortunate, fortunate for us and your residents, there's a solar developer where the load matches up almost perfectly. Their solar development matches up with your usage, the low-income customer usage. And that's why I'm before you tonight. Going to answer any questions, whether it be aggregation related or low-income community solar related.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if I could just add a little to this, you know, I asked Mark to come in tonight to add, to, to really promote the opportunity here. As, as you mentioned, we use Colonial Power for our aggregation, townwide aggregation. That's a voluntary program that any utility user in Kingston can take advantage of. Some do, some don't. For those who don't and have, and are eligible for this low-income credit, you can reach out to Colonial, they can get you signed up for the aggregation process or the aggregation price, which is less expensive than, than Eversource's price if you're not taking advantage of that now. And if you're fortunate enough to be eligible for this program, you'll get some additional savings as well. So I asked Mark to be here tonight, really to promote the program, to promote the aggregation program, but also secondarily to promote the, the additional opportunities to save some money as well, depending on your financial situation. So that's really why I wanted to come. I, I asked, I think the board can, can, can vote to accept this if they want to move in that direction. But it was an opportunity to make everybody who watches tonight and in the future aware of the programs so they can try to take advantage of it if they're interested.
And I'll just piggyback on the administrator's comment, I just, before I came down, so far the program has saved $4.25 million since inception, all the customers over that term. I will tell you, I did a little bit of arithmetic, just so that you know. Those savings would equal about $14 per month for the low-income customer, about $170 per year, about $3,500 per month for all the customers, and $42,000 in savings over there, over the course of a year for the low-income customers.
And just to refresh my memory, is the Colonial Power Group, is that a opt-in or opt-out?
It's an opt-out.
Were people opted into it or did you have to opt, do you have to opt into it yourself?
So it was an opt-out program, but if you're not in it now, you can always opt in. I just want to state that the program works, there's no fee or penalty. So if you're not in, you can opt in. If for any reason you want to get out, you can get out at any point and come back to the program. It's truly just a choice the town has brought to the marketplace.
Any other questions?
In the example, it shows 257 customers. Those are the low-income people that were qualified, correct?
Currently qualified, that is correct, sir.
How many Kingston customers altogether?
Counting small commercial or just residential, 3,877 customers, residential customers.
Okay, but that, that's the total, how many of those are in the program?
Those are the total customer, the total meters in the program.
Here in Kingston?
Here in Kingston, in total, counting small commercial, 3,000, 4,388 meters. So on the residential side, you can pretty much assume it's three to one. And 257 of them are currently qualified for low income. People should look at, at Eversource, that there is a, there is a link for low income and people that you go and you, you fill out, you're automatically enrolled if you already get any of the benefits, SNAP or any of, you know, L I HEAP or any of that, you're automatically qualified, you just need to notify them. It's a tremendous discount.
But so people have to actively.
For the, for the, for the Eversource discount, you're going to have to actively do something to participate. This, everyone will automatically. This, everyone will automatically get it unless they were to opt out.
Okay.
Do we have, is there a possibility to put this information on the website, on our website?
We absolutely will. Once we, if you, if you approve it this evening, we'll, we'll get some information, get it on the website to make sure people are aware of it. Absolutely.
Is there any downside to this?
I don't think there's any downside. I just, again, if it was, I just, I thought it was an opportunity to publicize, which is why I wanted to come tonight. I didn't think it was much of a.
Okay.
I should just let you know, it's a, it happens to be my son, Joseph. I didn't imagine, so we're going to file the, the first probably tomorrow, the town of Plymouth. You'd be shortly thereafter, maybe within, depending on when the administrator can sign. Maybe within a week or two, we'd file with that as well. Just so that you know, I mean, literally cutting-edge in the state right now.
Can you make it before Plymouth? It's just a pride thing.
The pilgrims actually landed here first. The original Plymouth Rock was.
They couldn't find the rock.
It was down the nook. All right, sorry, Gray's Beach.
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator to sign a memorandum of understanding between the town and the solar developer to deliver benefits to low-income customers participating in Kingston Municipal Aggregation Program.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming in and explaining that. That was helpful.
And for sitting through the dog hearing.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Pam. Yes, appreciate it.
All right, you too. Take care. All right, next item is discussion on the cable franchise renewal. We have Attorney William Solomon, who is joining us via Zoom to discuss the details of entering cable franchise negotiations with Verizon. In our board materials, we have license expiration notice from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable providing information on the renewal process, as well as the license renewal from Verizon. So Attorney Solomon, you are on Zoom and he is here to, to answer any of our questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good to be here before the board. William Solomon, Special Cable Counsel. I actually handled the Comcast license renewal in 2018 for the town and the Verizon license renewal in 2019 for the town. It was a good experience and a great town. So there's two matters, as pointed out. The more immediate matter is to come on and to represent the town and to very expeditiously complete a Verizon license renewal. And that license is due to be completed. And my goal would be to, you know, have that done, you know, at the beginning of, at the beginning of October, certainly. That's a quick time period, but I think with Verizon, you can move quickly. Part of the issue with Verizon is they're a great cable company, but they sort of have one foot out the door from providing cable service. They've had thoughts for years of doing more streaming and just the internet and the telephone. And because of that, it's, it's a good time to move ahead and get that license done. And I, I have, have a model license that I think will work well in terms of the policy and legal issues. And then we'll tailor it for Kingston. What Kingston has that's a little unique is that, that you're part of a consortium, as you know, with Plymouth and Pembroke and Duxbury and one other town I'm forgetting. And you're served by PAC TV and they do a great job. It's one of the leading programs in the, in the Commonwealth. And because of that, in each of these communities, the PEG access capital, public education government access capital dollars, which are in addition to the operating dollars, where you get 5% of gross revenues from Verizon and Comcast, that's the maximum allowed under the Cable Act. But in addition to that, there's an avail, there's an opportunity in a cable license to get PEG capital. But because there are a good number of cable subscribers, the PAC TV and the towns have been able to achieve licenses with modest PEG capital that, that together with the operating, has met the needs of, of the, the community to date. But with changing cable economics, what, one of the things I want to do when I started reaching out today to the executive director of PAC TV is to better understand where they are in terms of their program and where they are financially. To give us a better sense of where Kingston wants to be on PEG access capital. And that would also include looking together with the town administrator and, and the folks in town fairly quickly at are there specific Kingston video needs that need to be met in terms of public buildings that PAC TV can meet as part of its budget? Or whether there was, it'd be a need for some additional PEG capital to, in order to meet those Kingston-specific needs? Now, one of the things about a cable license is, is that interplays, it interplays with the other cable license. So there are limitations that arise based on the existing Comcast license, where Verizon is prepared to treat the town fearfully, but it doesn't want a difference in support to be so significant, they feel they're at a competitive advantage. So it's kind of like playing three-way bumper pull. And what I'll look at, working with the town administrator and, and the board as involved at different stages, is to figure out what your needs are, how PAC TV can meet those needs, if there are some additional needs for PAC TV and for the town, how that can best be met in this current Verizon license, given the fact that there is a comparison to the Comcast license, which runs out in 2028, as you pointed out, that, that there's a notice about that license from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. So I'll be looking at all those issues. I do it all the time. I want to work closely with you, but my goal would be to have this completed so the board could vote in, in, in October and hopefully even early October, to have an excellent license that would serve you for the next five years. Comcast does five-year licenses for different reasons. That's what you have now. That works. They provide, and they, they provide five years of capital in that five-year license. It gives them some flexibility, but it'll give you certainty as to the capital. And typically, you can get that capital paid within the first two years and not to wait five years. So with that said, whatever approvals need to be made by the board, I'd appreciate being able to come on, sign a contract, and work with the town to get a, a license that meets your needs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
He answered, he answered the question for me. I thought, and mistakenly included in the, in the motion, a 10-year agreement. It's only a five-year agreement. So when you make that motion, if you wouldn't mind just modifying that, please.
And what I see this as is basically authorization to come on as your counsel again to complete this. And, you know, we'll have a full written license for you and a summary prior to your official vote going forward. But this is to get it started, but most importantly, to get it started and move ahead quickly.
And Attorney Solomon, the effective date of the new agreement would be what?
Well, it would be whatever date it's signed. And so if we do it in early October, it'd be an October date, and that would be a five-year license
Okay, thank you.
going forward.
So I think the one that we have now is, was dated back from 2019.
Are there any, yeah, or even omit the effective date to be determined or something? Carl, do you have a question?
My only comment, both of these licenses only provide minimum revenue for the town. Isn't that correct? Like maybe less than $10,000 a year for each one of them?
They provide very little, if any, revenue to the town because it's all directed to PAC TV.
Okay.
Right, but the revenue to PAC TV would be more significant. You have, at the end of last year, the number of cable subscribers appear to be 1,000, Verizon, well, Verizon cable subscribers, 1,322. So if you take 1,322, assume the per month revenue is, let's say, 100 and, you know, at least it's going to be, let's say, $138 times 12 equals, times 5%. The 5% would be about $110,000 a year from Verizon and more, more from Comcast, because they have more subscribers.
Sorry, just so I understand, the, the fee to us would be the $6,750 for the negotiation and whatnot. There's no financial benefit to the town, but there's a financial benefit to PAC TV.
The financial benefit, my two cents would be there's no, there's no direct benefit to the town of Kingston. However, I think that PAC TV provides a much broader type of, of local access television than having an individual Town of Kingston cable network. So while the town of Kingston is paying the $6,750 and we aren't recouping any of that money, the product that we get from, from PAC TV on the local scene now is, is a much higher quality product than we would get if we were doing it on our own.
And ultimately, the results of the negotiation, in theory, benefit the residents of the town.
They will. And ultimately, I think Attorney Solomon and I have had a conversation. We'll make sure that whatever negotiations occur, Kingston's franchise fee to the Verizon cable user, the percentage will be no higher than they are in any of the other towns that are contributing to PAC TV.
And to be fair, the local scene does a great job. They cover a lot of our meetings.
Absolutely.
They cover school events as well. Before they cut our feed, because I'm saying they.
No, they, they also cover some league and, and sports and graduation.
Absolutely.
Maybe I'm missing something, but I thought I read in the licensee or the contract that there's an $8,000 per year fee, franchise fee or something that goes to somebody.
Yeah, that's correct. So there's two, two sources of revenue. One would be the 5% of gross revenues. And that's what PEG access, community television, that's what runs it. Pays for the employees, the supplies, the other costs that are incurred to run an organization. And that's the 5% of gross revenues. And Verizon, that's about a little over $100,000 a year. The $8,000 paid five times in your current Verizon license was the PEG capital part, not the operating, but the capital. And that was $8,000 paid over, once a year for five years for a total of $40,000. Now, you know, that is, that is a modest PEG capital amount. But at the time, what was determined, as, as the town administrator said, is that was basically around, maybe a little bit more, what other communities were getting for PEG capital and therefore, and it's complicated, but in theory, you know, and any company could charge its own subscribers. That's up to them. So that what's, what's different about Kingston and PAC TV is that one, that your community television needs, which are really important part of your community, your local economy, your, your community groups, are served by, by your decision. It's always your decision, but by, by local scene, PAC TV. And in the current Verizon license, the support is the 5% of gross revenues for the operating cost, the maximum allowed under the Cable Act, and $8,000 a year, five times. And what we'll do is negotiate the new terms. But before we do that, we'll take a careful look at both what PAC TV needs are, making sure that you're not paying a, as the town administrator says, more than your proportion of those needs. What your needs are, such that if you, for instance, need some cameras or you need some monitors in a room, and PAC TV should have a capital plan that tries to address your needs. In the off-chance that those PAC TV would take the position that, well, no, that's outside of their normal capital expenditures for a town, we'll want to make sure to see whether or not there's a need potentially to get a little more capital because you have Kingston-specific needs. So what we want to do is we want to look at getting fair compensation for your right-of-way. Because remember, they're paying you because they're using your street. You take the street, you maintain it, you repair it, you insure it, you clean it, you police it. If it was your road or your property and someone wanted to make a profit by using your property and you thought governments should be run like a business, you would say to them, that's fine, but you need to pay me to use my property. As the stewards of the fiduciary responsibility of the town of Kingston, you, you're in the same position as you are as a private property owner. You want to make sure that you're good stewards of public land and making sure that if someone wants to use it for a business, there, the terms are fair to the taxpayers. And that we want to do that, getting the benefits of PAC TV, but also making sure that Kingston is not paying a disproportionate amount to support PAC TV. And I do that by looking at the other four licenses, which I've started to do, and putting this all together, working with the town administrator, and then yourself to come up with what I think is a good plan. The good news is that because PAC TV effectively and efficiently runs community television, we should be able to very quickly, once we figure out what is it you want, very quickly get that license done and have that done, as I said, by the beginning of October.
All right, I'm going to let Keith, you're, you're, you're good.
I'm sorry, I was just going to try to answer Selectman Pike's question a little quicker. The $8,000 goes to PAC TV for capital.
Okay, that, that's what I thought I was getting out of those answers.
Yeah, you can ask for, you can, you can negotiate the 5% that would go to the community, or in this case, PAC TV. And you can also negotiate capital needs for the local access television station. All those, all those fees or charges are passed on to the, to the end user. So it's, but that $8,000 in this case would go to PAC TV to deal with capital needs of the town of Kingston.
The local scene formerly known as PAC TV.
Right. All right, so not to put time pressure, but we postponed our seven o'clock to 7:30 and we still have a few things to do. So there's no further questions. I would, like, maybe let's move to a motion?
Where does the money come from? Is my last question. Does we have a legal budget? Okay, sorry.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move the board, as cable television license issuing authority, vote as follows: to move Attorney William Solomon to represent the town of Kingston in cable television renewal negotiations with Verizon New England Incorporated with.
Nope, nope, for a term of.
For.
The term of five years.
Just for the term of five years, not at signature. Okay.
Okay, I think so.
Sure?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous.
I just didn't want to say that.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you. Bye-bye.
I guess that's the question. Do we need an effective date or we don't? Because it's just a legal document with the effective date being the signature. Okay.
All right, we're jumping over number three.
Thank you.
Number four, consideration of a one-day liquor license from Hilltop Athletic Association. Ken Moally from the Hilltop Athletic Association has submitted a request for one-day liquor license for an annual softball charity tournament. It'll be taking place on August 2nd, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Opachinsky Field Complex. The Rec Commission has approved the use of the facility for this event. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request from Hilltop Athletic Association for a one-day liquor license for a softball charity tournament taking place on August 2nd, 2025, at the Opachinsky Field Complex from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., contingent upon receipt of a valid alcohol-serving certification.
Can I get a second first?
Second.
All right.
Sorry, I have a quick question. On the form, it says, it was signed off by the police department, but the fire department says, asterisk, see back. Do we know what he said? Okay, I just, if there were concerns, I just, I wanted to know what they were. Just a signature? Why is he signing on the back? All right, as long as he signs off on it, I was, I'm fine with it.
And I assume this is a empty day for youth sports?
Yeah, the calendar was checked before it was approved.
Excellent.
All right, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, additional items. Discussion and possible vote to establish a school zone on Second Brook Street and signage for the Kingston Elementary School and KIS school campuses.
So I was contacted by a member of the school department who made us, made us aware that the elementary intermediate school campus did not have a, a school zone in front of it. I'm not sure if that was triggered by the school zone that was created for the, for the middle high school or it was an independent thought. Bottom line is. Bottom line is, we, staff, town staff met with school staff down at the schools. We talked about what their concerns were. The Police Department, the Streets and Parks Department, and the School Department all support the idea of creating a school zone. The Kingston School Committee voted to approve this at a meeting about a month ago. We've been holding off, frankly, bringing this forward because there was a concern about having a stamped engineer review the plan and basically approve the plan to make sure that it met all the engineering requirements of a school zone. The cost is an estimated $8,000, and then there was an additional $7,000 in signs that are needed for this. I've reached out to the school superintendent and asked her if she would consider having the school department pay for half of this because it is an unbudgeted item for us. We'll have to take it out of either Chapter 90 money or other Streets, Trees, and Parks line items. The town did fund over $50,000 in fiscal '25 to establish the school zone in front of the high school that wasn't budgeted for. So it's, I guess I'm looking at it as a team approach. If there's a school zone that's been identified and we don't have one there, is there a liability potentially in the future if something were to happen? I'm not sure, but I think it's appropriate to establish the school zone. I haven't heard back. The school superintendent wants to go to the school committee to ask for the $12,000, $12,500, which is fine. What I'm asking the Board to consider tonight is to establish a school zone and to allow for the expenditure up to $16,000 to have the engineering and signage done with the hopes of having this school zone in place for the first day of school.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
It's probably a question that I shouldn't ask, but does the engineering... So we just did engineering and the school zone that we did. Is there something different that has to take place?
The road layout, the speed limit, you know, are all different down there. Is it, you know...
Is it different than putting in any old sign in town?
So respectfully, I'm not an engineer, but I think it's somewhat cookie cutter. They better apply, you know, there are certain distances the signs have to be placed.
Okay.
And then are those distances, is there a site, is there a site distance issue from the school? And do they have to move it up and move it back a little bit?
Not something Streets, Trees, and Parks could potentially do.
The comment that...
I mean, I just...
No, I think it's a good idea, and we pushed back on it, frankly, and convinced me that by having an engineer look at this and evaluate it to make sure that we're in compliance, if there was ever any sort of an issue with liability insurance because of the design of it, we'd have an engineered plan that they'd be responsible for any potential damages if there were some. So I really don't want to spend the eight grand for engineering, but just for this peace of mind, I thought it made sense.
Okay. So, and it says, site visit, it would include a site visit to evaluate crossing locations, confirm existing conditions, signage crosswalk, MUTCD compliance, engineering opinion on location, needs for crosswalk upgrades, preparation for signage plan, aerial base map, limited coordination and documentation. Just for, I know you can read it, but I just, not everybody's looking at it, I'm sure.
Everybody's looking at it.
So is this...
It's a little...
Everybody's looking at it.
I guess my question would be, we as a town paid for the $50,000 for the school zone for the regional school district, right? With no financial support from the schools?
Correct.
Or the other towns?
Or from the other towns?
Just in general, the schools, regional, local, whatever. Okay. I mean, I think it's an important ask. I do have that.
And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping, and we have a school committee member sitting virtually, so hopefully she hears this and can carry this back to the school committee meeting. Again, it's, in my mind, we're one community. I'm hoping that the school department can find, you know, $7,500 in their $30 million budget to help with a, you know, a potential safety concern. We don't have the money either, but I feel as though, and I don't want to speak for Chief Holmes, but I think Chief Holmes feels as though having this school zone identified after 30 years of the buildings being there, you know...
More than that, unbelievable. I went there.
For some period of time.
Were we the only community in Massachusetts that didn't have school zones for our schools?
I don't have an answer for you.
Maybe.
The most ridiculous.
But at the end of the day, we've identified a deficit. We're trying to address it.
Yep.
I'm hoping that the school committee is able to find some money. If not, I think it's an important enough issue to ask the Board to fully fund this. Are we losing some of our ability to negotiate with the school by doing this? Maybe, but I'm hoping it's kind of a collaborative thing, frankly.
No, I agree. I think it's an important ask, but I do think it's obviously an important thing to have at the school.
And I find the $15,000 reasonable, including spending $8,000 on the engineering. But I also point out that it's another example of doing something that we need to do, and then we find out that there's potentially $300,000 problem in the crosswalks not being proper. It seems to me that these things go on and on and on.
Would a DPW have coordinated this better? Sorry.
Too soon. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I definitely think it's, it should be done. I was an advocate of the school zone by the high school as well. I support it, I guess. I would love to see a shared approach to the funding, I guess.
So I think, I can certainly let the Board know when the next Kingston School Committee meeting is, and you're more than welcome to attend and advocate for paying for half if you'd like.
Okay. I feel a little...
Want to take a motion?
I would love a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Town Administrator to contract with an engineering firm to verify the location of a new school zone on Second Brook Street for the elementary and intermediate schools as illustrated in the included map. Further, to authorize the purchase of the necessary school zone signs, total costs to not exceed $16,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, people.
I'd love to add the contingency of, like, assuming we get some coordination, but I understand that's not real.
So the next item has caused some confusion with the public. The next item is discussion on appointing rather than electing a town clerk. I think some people thought that this meant we were appointing a town clerk now to replace our current elected town clerk, and that is not the case. What we're talking about doing is similar to what we did with the treasurer-collector and make that position an appointed rather than elected position and...
But we don't make that decision ultimately, Tom.
Correct, correct. And that was some further confusion. But I think we should also point out that we have spoken with the current elected town clerk, who is also supportive of this. So I'm going to hand this over to Keith to address this.
So I think you've hit most of the major points, Mr. Chair. You know, I bring this forward, it's been talked about very, on a surface level for a little while. I wanted to just raise it, and the reason is really timing. As we've learned with the appointed treasurer-collector, you've got to wait until the end of a term for the appointment to actually begin. The term for the town clerk expires at the election, the May 2026 election. So if the Board was interested in pursuing this, what would have to occur is it would be a warrant article and a warrant. If it was approved at the town meeting, you'd have to have special legislation approved by the legislature, which is, I think, kind of a housekeeping-type thing, and then it would be set in stone. So if the Board is interested in pursuing something like this, I did speak to Mr. Gallagher about it. He does support it. My rationale is very similar to the rationale with the collector-treasurer. Kingston has been exceptionally fortunate in having some very high-quality people in those positions who are in the building, just like everybody else is, but they don't have to be. And if it became a popularity contest, we could really have some real problems with the maintenance of our permanent records if the wrong candidate was elected to this position. So I just wanted to raise it, see if the Board was interested in putting something like this on a fall town meeting warrant for voter consideration. And if they were and it was approved, we could potentially file a special legislation and have something in place for next spring. So there would not need to be an election for, this isn't public, this isn't public comment. This is my turn now. I'm kidding, Rob. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm not kidding that much. So I just wanted to raise it for the Board. I felt it was timely. And whatever decision you guys want to make is fine. I just thought it was important to at least raise it and have the conversation.
You spoke to this a little bit in what you just said, but typically I would want to see something like this at an annual town meeting, but due to the timing...
Exactly.
Right.
It does make sense if the town is interested in moving that way. And much like we discussed earlier in previous meetings about the DPW, I would want us, if we're going to proceed down this path, I would want to provide folks with some examples of how it works and what would be different. The appointment, of course, being made ultimately by the Board of Selectmen through the Town Administrator's recommendation after an extensive interview process and whatnot. There are benefits to both, I mean, there are benefits to having elected officials. There are benefits to having appointed officials in this being a, it's a skilled position. So you want to have the right folks in, and like you said, we've had great, we've had great town clerks, so we've been very lucky.
And I don't think anybody realized, it hasn't been an insurmountable challenge to have, you know, the collector-treasurer have the appointment process be approved by town meeting and then have to wait two and three years to actually put it in place. So it's not ideal. This would, again, this would meet the timing pretty well. So if the Board was interested in pursuing this, we obviously would try to educate people as much as we can over the next few months to make them aware of the pros and cons of making this change. I did put a, just last thing, I'm sorry. I did put a, some special legislation that was approved by a neighboring community, and I can't remember which community, so I apologize.
Was it Acton? It was in the past?
Acton. So there was a community recently that I got the information from, from Tallerman, me, Tallerman. And just to give an example of what that would look like.
Upton, okay. Shoresbury. Upton, Acton, it's close.
Maybe we were off by a bell hole and...
That's pretty close. Wheel of Fortune.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Do we support moving this forward at this time?
I support it.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen support the inclusion of a warrant article on the 2025 Fall Town Meeting warrant, seeking to have the town clerk position be appointed by the Board of Selectmen rather than having the position be elected.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
When he said it louder.
He did. Four, one, zero, with gusto.
I just think, yeah, I think it's important that this goes to the town.
I don't know exactly how I feel about it. And if everyone opposes it, that's okay too?
Yep.
I agree.
Timing is right. Just at least ask the question.
All right, do we have some meeting minutes? Someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the open session meeting minutes of July 15th, 2025, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, Town Administrators report.
Real quickly, as I mentioned earlier, when I was asked, the Main Street sidewalks, the estimated cost were $100,000, which unfortunately is cost prohibitive right now unless we get some additional Chapter 90 money. That the legislature is supporting a pretty significant bond bill for infrastructure. If we get that additional Chapter 90 money from the state, that's approximately, a little over $400,000. I want to thank Representative LaNacha for her support with that. But right now, what we're going to be doing is taking a look at trying to repair the areas that are in poor condition, whether they be holes or roots growing through the ground. We'll try to address that to the best of our ability sometime in April, I'm sorry, April, August. We had a couple of, we had our Assistant Conservation Agent Juliana Dunham has decided to resign effective August 28th. We, the Fire Department has hired a firefighter paramedic, Evan Gagnon, who starts August 5th. And just to let the Board know, the employment advertisement for the building inspector has been published. We have received a couple of resumes so far. I'm trying to put together an interview panel of the planner, potentially the conservation agent, and the health agent, the Fire Department, if a Board member is interested in participating in that interview committee, I would be happy to take a name of somebody if they're interested. Just let me know. And then we've already mentioned it, National Night Out's from 4:30 to 7:30 your next board meeting, so you can either go before or go after, because we can just schedule if you'd like, just that. We'll try to change the public hearing. We will try to do that. If we can't, we'll let you guys know. It was, it was my, Trish asked me if we should reschedule. I said, no, the Board doesn't cancel these meetings. It's my fault. We have a conflict.
We blame you. That's fine.
Apologize.
So one of the options is that we, did we discuss the cost of...
I didn't. It's short money. I need to re-advertise for the day before or the day after, Trish.
So here's my proposal. If most of the Board would like to attend the National Night Out, it'd be difficult to leave during the middle of it, obviously. What I had suggested is, and there's a time component for the hearing. You know, we're trying not to inconvenience the business. We're trying to be pro-business here in town. What Keith, I think, suggested was maybe we do another, we could just do a Zoom meeting the day before, the day after, sometime that week.
Zoom at the middle school, so we can just zip into the school and then...
Sure. So what I'm suggesting is maybe that Monday or Wednesday to do a Zoom and just discuss.
So if it's okay with you, if it's okay with the Board, what Trish will end up doing probably, because it won't be me, we'll reach out to the applicant, find out what day is convenient for them, make sure we meet the posting requirements.
Yep.
So it's going to ask, has it already been posted?
Yeah.
It has.
I didn't even think of that.
So it's already been posted? What's the posting requirement for the public hearing?
It's like seven days, but then the paper has to be in seven days before, so it's like two weeks.
So maybe Thursday of that week.
Wednesday, we have a regionalization.
So we'll reach out to them, we'll reach out to the paper, make sure we meet all the dates. And even if it has to be early the following week. My concern was, you know, this company is looking for a license. They aren't able to move forward without the license, so I don't want to ask them to wait two weeks. So if we can do it as quickly as we can, we'll do that. And we'll let the Board know what works posting-wise and what works for the customer.
What time was it scheduled for? Was it six or 6:15? Okay, that's fine. Sorry, too many questions at once.
I mean, are we anticipating, we can do a quick Zoom during that, anyway?
Look at your buddy and see if he wants to do it over there.
He can come in here. He can be here.
Carl can be in here by himself. He's like, I will not do a Zoom meeting.
But I mean, if it's only going to be like a five-minute meeting anyways, why can't we just hammer it through?
The National Night Out?
Yeah.
I cannot attend. I'm slinging slushes that day, so I'm...
We need three.
Yep.
Yeah.
You talking about on that Tuesday?
Yeah, if you're going to keep it on that Tuesday, we just need to make sure.
Then we're not inconveniencing the business.
Right, yep.
And it's...
Let us see what we can do. We'll email the Board, let them know what your options are. And you guys can let us know what works.
That works. All right, so we're looking good. We've got our meeting in about six minutes. I believe that's it, so if there's, are there any questions for the Town Administrator? Okay, any Selectmen comments? All right, our next regular meeting is to be determined.
Probably August 12th, maybe August 12th.
Right. All right, with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
Hold on. Move to adjourn open session to...
Make sure you get the right one.
It's this one. To recess to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
Second.
So declare. All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hold on, roll call, Board. So Eric, aye.
Kim, aye.
Missy, aye.
Don, aye.
Carl, aye.
And it is 7:25.
Thank you. Thank you.